All right. Okay, we're going to call the meeting to order. If we could all rise to pledge allegiance. Does that I can talk allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America, and to the republic of which we stand, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Mr. Scott, if we can call the roll.
Mrs. Albright.
Here.
Mrs. Bell.
Here.
Mrs. Gottfried.
Here.
Mrs. Leoni.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Olsson.
Here.
Mr. Scott, here. Mr. Strobel.
Here.
Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
Madam President, we're all here.
All right. Moving on. Time for the superintendent's report. Dr. Cooper.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to thank our district and building administration, our district professional staff, support staff, our contracted service providers publicly here for a successful start to the year and share my true appreciation for their continued efforts upon the challenges that we continue to navigate, not only with the start of a school year, but with navigating the global pandemic that continues to appear to linger and everything that they're doing to support our kids and our families. We continue to set aggressive goals as a district. However, our district staff continues to be up to the challenge in meeting those goals. Also, I'd like to thank the board for your continued support of the resources that you continue to allow for us to utilize to meet those needs of our students and families. And then my final item here is just a reminder that next meeting at the committee, the whole superintendent report will be presenting to the board related to a district building rightsizing plan, which will highlight the district being able to provide, potentially provide a full-day kindergarten option to all of our Blazer Learning Community youngest learners and their respective families. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Cooper. Moving on to procedures for public participation. If you have any prepared statements that are to be read to the board instead of public presentation to the board president prior to being addressed. Comment on agenda items will be made by rising and approaching the microphone and stating your name and address and signing on the sheet provided. You'll be granted three minutes to address the board. Your three-minute time limit will start when you begin to speak. When your three minutes are over, you will be asked to be seated. Any item that is not on the agenda, as well as agenda items acted upon, comments will be made at the designated section at the end of the agenda. For anybody who needs to see it, our agenda for tonight is available through the school board tab on the Daniel Boone website, db.org. And there is a paper copy in the back of the room to know what's being covered on today's agenda. That being said, do we have any presentations by the public on agenda items?
Mrs. Olsson, before the UK public participation, it's brought to my attention that there was a need for the board to vote an amendment to the agenda.
Correct. You need me to do it before. I understand. So, under, so let's put public presentations on hold for a second. Move down to 2A, 2A1. For agenda edits, we do have an agenda edit that we'd like to add to the agenda. For 61A, the edit would be to change under 6111, Steven Biggerstaff's. On the agenda, it's listed as his last, his resignation was effect, would be effective September 22nd, 2021. We would like to change that to close a business September 27th, 2021. Which is today. Can I get a motion from the board to add that? Mr. Strobel, can I get a second? Ms. Leoni, can I get a vote?
Well, before we vote, I'd just like to state that the reason for the agenda is the district administration consolered to be a solicitor and determined that today's date would be the appropriate date for the resignation. And under Act 15, which of 2021, changed sunshine law. And we're going to be an amendment to the motion, to the agenda act published 24 hours in advance. We need to vote on it, and we need to state the purpose for the reason for the change in the agenda. So with that stated, you can vote.
And unless, are there any comments, questions from the board on that agenda edit motion that we're going to vote on? Can I get a vote?
Mrs. Albright.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Gottfried.
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes? Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olsson.
Yes. So, as Mr. Subers mentioned, it is, it is a new clarification to the statutes that, or, I mean, to the regulations.
To the sunshine law, yes.
Okay, to the statute. So, it's not like we were doing it wrong before. We're just making a change to keep us in line with the, with the new requirements. Okay, so, and because there was a change to the agenda, and you can now, as the public, make comments on agenda items. If anybody has any comments or to bring forward, you can do that now on agenda items. Okay, hearing none. Moving on, back, back to announcements. I did want to say there is an executive session tonight, after tonight's meeting, to discuss potential litigation. Moving on to the consent agenda, 3.
Excuse me, will there be an opportunity for the public to speak that was just about agenda items, right?
Correct. And, yes, there will be at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, at the end of the meeting. That would be great.
Yep. And so, moving on to consent, consent items 3A1 through many, through 15. The heating unit is going to go in and out, so I'm going to sound really loud, or I'm going to have to be yelling over top of it, so sorry about that. So, whatever it is, 1 through 15. Do I have a motion for those? Ms. Albright, Mr. Strobel, yes, the second. Any comments, questions, concerns from the board on the consent items? Mostly, I wanted to make sure that the board did look over the meeting schedule for next year. Make, make sure they didn't see anything glaring that was problematic. Okay, no comments, questions, concerns? If we could have a vote, Mr. Scott.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Gottfried. Mrs. Leoni.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Scott, yes? Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olsson.
Yes.
And Mrs. Albright.
Okay. Moving on to personnel consent. Just one item under 4A. No, there's more than one. I can count. 4A1 through 2. Do I have a, do I have a motion for those? Ms. Bell, do I have a second?
I'll make it.
Mr. Scott, any comments, questions, concerns on those items from the board?
This is 4A1 through 2.
Yeah, 4A1 through 2. And can I get a vote then?
Absolutely. Mrs. Albright.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Gottfried.
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes? Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olsson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Okay, moving on to finance added consent, 5A1 through 8. Can I get a motion for those?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Strobel, can I get a second? Ms. Gottfried. Before anyone asks, number 3, I was hoping for Mr. or Ms. Dr. Cooper to give some color on, on that addition.
Excuse me, why H-back? Why is there, why do you have to replace it at H-back? You just spent $12,000, like $5,000 off of both.
Ma'am, there's no, there's no calling out during the voting. You will have the opportunity to make public comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Madam President, the item number 3 is an additional cost. The board did approve the paving of the transition house driveway. When they ripped up and looked at the understructure of the portion of the driveway that extended beyond where the garage, the double garage is located, there was no understructure there or compacted stone. So, when they were out there doing the work, if the work was not going to be completed then, it would have delayed the cost, or delayed the work by at least another four to six weeks. They would have had to shut down, come back, and complete the work. I had the folks from the company dig down to make sure that it was in the middle of the driveway, not just the one section of it. Confirmed that that was the case, and it was never a base put down there. So, the extra work was $6,500.
And the newest one is number 8, the ice machine. We just found out last, was it last week? But since the last board meeting, that that ice machine was, went, went at the athletic trainer's office. And obviously, it's needed. So, it's, that's, that's a new item. One thing I will, you know, at our last facilities meeting, right before our last facilities meeting, two weeks ago, was when we found out that there was a significant leak from the items listed in number 1 and damaged a significant amount of things in the, in the library. And, you know, our things that we've, the things that were damaged will probably be covered through insurance. We don't have that number yet. But we are responsible for fixing the item that was broken that caused the leak. So, we're fixing something that actually, like, died on us. We're not, you know, doing preventative maintenance. That's just fixing something that's, that's been broken. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Of anything on the, on the added consent items? Mr. Scott?
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Gottfried.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes? Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olsson.
Yes.
Mrs. Albright.
Yes.
Mrs. Gottfried. Did I bite you? I just wanted to see if it says same answer. Mrs. Leoni.
Yes.
Okay, nine yeses. Sorry, Mrs. Gottfried. Catch you there.
It was a yes. Sounded.
All right. So, moving on to personnel added consent. We have 6A1 through 4 as amended. Do I have a motion for those? Mr. Strobel, do I have a second?
I'll make it.
Mr. Scott, any comments, questions, concerns? And, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Quick comment. The extra percutaneous positions. I look at them, they seem fine, but we really should see those at our committee meeting before the board.
Right, so that was not available at our meeting two weeks ago?
No.
Okay, all right. Yeah, we should be, we should be seeing those earlier. And I know, I know that's not the first time. We've gotten better and then.
We had, I think we're assuming it's weathered. It's not on that weather.
I see, okay. All right. Any other comments? Moving on to a vote, Mr. Scott.
Mrs. Albright.
Yes.
Mrs. Gottfried.
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni.
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes? Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olsson.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
And Ms. Bell, Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Welcome, board. Okay, moving on to programs added consent, 7A1 through 6. Can I get a vote? I mean, can I get a motion on those? Ms. Bell, can I get a second? Mr. Strobel. Okay.
Who is the first? I hear you said that.
All right. Anybody have any comments, questions, concerns on what we have here? We've, we've heard already about adding Fauci to unified sports, some standard travel. Yeah, any, any comments, questions, concern? Mr. Scott, can I get a vote?
Yes. Mrs. Albright.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Gottfried.
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Miller. Mr. Scott, yes? Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olsson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
All right. Moving on to old business, 8A1 and 2. Can I get a motion for those? Ms. Albright, can I get a second?
I'll make it.
Mr. Scott. It's for the, it's for the minutes. Any comments, questions, concerns from the board for last, last meeting's minutes? Can I get a vote?
Yes, Mrs. Albright.
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni.
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes? Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Olsson.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Gottfried.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
And Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
All right. There's nothing listed under new business. I, I do have one thing I did want to mention before we go on to procedures, the presentations by the public. We've had several meetings in a row where parents have come forward and given, given some very specific information about their students. I just want you to, as, as parents, I want you to be, I want you to think about it. You know, these meetings are recorded before you share any information you don't. I want you to think about whether or not you think your kids want you sharing some of that information up at the, up at the, up at the mic before you do it. You know, you might know, obviously, you know your kid better than I do, so I just, I just wanted you to think about that before you tell stories with lots of personal details. So, moving on to presentations by the public. Yep, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Daxel. I want to start by saying, Dr. Cooper, I want to let you know that I have the utmost appreciation for you being previous principal of the American and as a fourth-year grad. Okay? Now, I have noticed, as some of you are sitting here, as some of us parents who are not very class, I don't know if it's intentional, but some of you have, I have seen looks. Okay? That is not fair. So, I am here to speak about the parents' rights and the failure of the district based upon not just my children, but although other fellow parents. But first, I want to start with a few powerful quotes. The first is from Mr. Ramona Reagan. Freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction. We didn't pass it upon our children in a blood streak. It must be fought for, protected, and handed upon without the need to escape. Next is from Nelson Mandela. Education is the most powerful weapon you can use to change the world. Alberon Stark. We cannot solve our problems with the same thing we used when we created them. And Mr. Robert Scholler. Better to do something imperfect than to do nothing perfect. I am here to speak for all parents and children who agree with me. I will be their voice, and we will not be silenced. We were happy to start the school year with masks being optional. One week later, September, August 30th, this mandate became public stating that it will be in effect in advance on 9/7/2021, which is after a holiday weekend. Why a week later? To date, this question remains unanswered by any and everyone. We submitted an exemption for, for both my children who attend the primary center, second grade and PM kindergarten. My daughter, who's in second grade, was automatically exempt for her medical condition and a 504 grant. My son, who's in kindergarten, was denied. We are not a broken home. Both my kids live together with both parents who have worked nonstop as essential employees. So, my unhealthy or high-risk child is exempt, but my healthy child is not. Why? Never have I received any written explanation. No, no, we are not conforming, I'm sorry. We, no, we are not conforming to this mandate until I get a real reason. Who specifically reviews the exemption clause? And what considerations are they reviewing? I received nothing about that. Now, on, the only contact I've had about this on this building level is from the principal, Mrs. Tector, and the school nurse, Mrs. Diama. On 9/8, Mrs. Tector called me with Mrs. Diama to say that maybe this will issue exempt for escorts, which were submitted on 9/8 with my kindergarten. They, on 9/9, they called me to say that my daughter was exempt, but my son is denied. The risks remain the same, by the way. Mrs. Tector stated that Daniel, my son, could attend in person as long as he wore a mask. If he did not wear a mask, that we would quote-unquote seek a bad virtual learning. I am sorry, your time's up. I'm, I'm speaking for all parents. I understand my time is up. But I have a point.
You can let her finish, it's fine.
What happened was, I'm a mother-in-law, my grandchildren.
Okay. Thank you.
There have been violations done to my niece on youth that I have upheld against his civil rights to a public education. To know that last Thursday, they sent him to the nurse's office to do school, virtual school? He doesn't even know how to log into his Google Classroom. So, my question to you is, what was he doing with the school nurse all day? When he was supposed to come here to this school and taught? And this, the school principal and the nurse are the only two that are answering my daughter-in-law about my grandchildren, telling her if they are not masked, that we will have to remove them from school, which is wrong. Because our grandchildren are where they're supposed to be, in school. Isn't that a law? If we do not bring them to school, then we would be negligent and liable for problems coming up at choice. Our grandchildren are where they're supposed to be. I want to know what your stance is on segregating my grandson for not wearing a mask, putting him in the nurse's office, lying and saying that he was on Google Classroom when he wasn't, because he doesn't know how to do anything with it? So, if somebody's either logging him in while he's there, not have that taught him how to use that power? I know that, because I tried to work with him today. Virtual learning at home with me while I was working. What are we going to do about discriminating him because he's not wearing a mask? And segregating him away from his classroom? School board is supposed to be the voice of the parents and the children. I heard you opt it out from having to deal with this mandate. That's wrong.
True.
It's absolutely wrong. It's utterly injustice to all your children in this, in this school district. You need to stand up for what's right and proper, and you need to stop violating the civil rights of these children.
True.
My grandson was in tears because he was waiting to watch Google Classroom gym class that he looked forward to that day. Inconsolately, he came home. We had to work with him to get him to calm down. He loved, he loved gym class. It was not allowed to happen. Because he did not wear a mask. The school board is focusing more on mask mandates than they are on the curriculum.
True.
When are you going to get back to schoolwork and school business? Doesn't the kids mean anything to you? There are sicknesses, flus, and all kinds of diseases that were around in this world. Those masks, and the facial, they're a joke.
True.
It's only the air, and so it's floating right around them. So, facial, they're doing nothing for these teachers that are wearing a mask today. If you're going to get sick, you're going to get sick. If you're not going to get sick, you're not going to get sick. This is where people are getting confused, where they say this has been made political. That's cowardly, lie. You're taking what the owner of Wolf is mandating, but she has no business in your business as a school district.
True.
He didn't make his point, but he started to mandate you.
True. Shut up and comply, that's what it is. Shut up and comply.
Thank you for your comments. No, that's okay. Yeah, if you want to get, if you don't, if you wouldn't mind, that'd be great.
I need a pen. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Do you need my call you should.
No, no, no. No, that's only for people who are coming to speak on behalf of an organization and not, not for parents and community members. Thank you. Do I have another? Go ahead.
Our to Marco from Rose Grove. Kids are not vectors for COVID-19. That is a fact, and it's proven time and time again. Of course, kids are going to get, are going to get sick and get colds as their immune systems have been suppressed over the last 18 months with social distancing and not getting exposure needed to build their immune systems. Let me remind you, number one of the neurotherapy codes is voluntary informed consent.
Voluntary.
Parents do not consent to this mask mandate.
True.
There have been numerous videos proving that wearing masks for long periods of time is harmful to your health, especially to children. Together, my husband and I spoke with Mr. Towers, the principal from the middle school, where we asked him if he agreed the mask mandate,
and there, if he agreed with the mask mandate, and there was a pause. There was an even longer pause when asked if there was money attached to the mask mandate. My question is, how much money is this school district getting in order to comply with this child abuse? Can you really live with yourselves for causing harm to our children? I can only guess where most of you board members, administrators, and of course, the teachers here instead worship me or Saint Fauci. But those, for those with common sense, we know that Dr. Fauci, the CDC, and the mainstream media have been lying the whole time to the American people.
Sure, I'm going to ask you to refrain from yelling out during the meeting. If you do not refrain from yelling out, we're going to have to adjourn the meeting. Ma'am, I'm trying to address a member of the audience.
Keep fear in the American people. A comment was made at the last board meeting, the board members who were suing. Who is suing you?
Rothschild.
Do you know that the parents would stand behind you if you could do the right thing? To the parents in this audience, how many lines must be crossed before your eyes would say no more? The mask mandate will never go away the longer we will allow this to continue. It is our duty to advocate for our children. My biggest fear is that people take our kids and vaccinate them without our consent. It happened in Australia. Don't think for one minute that it can't happen here. I put nothing past these people from doing the right thing morally, ever. Six in the nine board members' terms expires in 2021. We'll stand to replace these deadly terms. Super members and administrators. One day, sooner than you think, the truth will come out, and you won't be able to walk down the street, go grocery shopping, or live your life without parents of our school district reminding you that you did nothing to stop this child abuse. Because in my mind, you are like journalists that turn a blind eye to what Nazis did. You need to answer the question on how much money the district is getting for mask mandate compliance from the state, the federal government, or private donors. You need to put this information on the district website for all parents and toddlers to see. You need to answer who is suing individual school board members. Why can't the district say no more mask mandate? Why can't you do the right thing? Because once you answer these questions, the public will know that the mask mandate is not about health, it's about control.
True.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Do the right thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hello. Ms. Albrecht, how are you? My name is Valerie Peckman. I'm the AMD township. I actually just have a question to follow from the hearings that were occurring this month. I know there was three hearings, and Daniel Boone was following up on them with regard to parents and school districts suing due to mask mandates. I know there was a comment mentioned in the last meeting that you guys were going to await the outcome of the hearing to see how you guys are going to proceed forward, but until further notice, you are going to follow whatever the lawyer advised as far as the mask mandate. So I want to know, where does the school board lie with where we're currently standing for three cases?
Okay, um, Dia, if you have more comments to, to make before we do that, so we don't like infringe on your three minutes, do you want to talk? And then I can ask Mr. Supers to address that?
Well, based on your response, it's going to be my response. Because I need to understand, do the parents need to file an amicus briefing against the school district on behalf of the school district or on behalf of themselves in order to show public disinterest in the actual mask mandates? I want to know where we stand as a school district, because I need to know how to proceed forward.
Yeah, I do. Mr. Supers, you.
I can comment on the, the main action challenging this is an action brought against the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and Secretary of Health, Glenn V. Yurek. The briefs were scheduled for, plain sweep was submitted approximately a week ago. The Commonwealth's brief was due September 23rd, and it's awaiting the scheduling of argument before the Commonwealth court. So we're, we're in a holding pattern.
So do we then file an amicus briefing now? Will this school district intend on filing or joining in on the laws of like the other school districts?
I can't comment on, I can't provide legal advice.
I'm not asking for legal advice. I want to know what the school is doing.
Right, yeah, right now, the school district is not filing.
Participating in the.
Right.
Do you, is that something you need to vote on? Or, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We talked, we talked about this at the end of the last meeting, where I asked for an informal show of hands if anybody wanted to put our financial resources toward, toward fighting in court one way or another, and there were no hands, if I remember. So that's, that's, I don't think that's going to change.
So that'll remain standing, so then we will have to file on behalf of ourselves.
If that is your choice, we're not offering you legal advice, yeah.
I just, I just need to know how to proceed forward.
I understand.
Because the judicial system needs to see the public disinterest. And if you are against the actual mandate, you have to file an amicus briefing of some sort to voice your opinion if you are against the mandate. Again, I'm not giving any legal advice. I just want to make sure you're in the school district, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Love your shirt.
My name is Jimmy. I'm the AMD township. I'm just going to go off script and say whatever I want to say as I can. The first thing I have to say is I feel good for all you board members that have to deal with us every single week, come at me attacking it personally, I truly do. However, it's the job, I guess, right? If you guys signed up to do it, that's what happens with it. My thing was, is when you guys said that you were going to be sued personally, it kind of scratched my head, and I was like, sued personally? How does that work? I don't believe that for one second. So you guys have to stand on the ground and don't worry about that stuff and vote for what you believe is right. And I know a lot of these people probably do believe it's right or being told, you know, otherwise. That's just my personal opinion. One thing I heard was you were getting legal counsel from someone. And my assumption is, again, no disrespect to anyone, but it's just my personal opinion, my research that I do. Legal opinion might be this gentleman right here, Mr. Supers, who I believe is with Rothschild, who I know for a fact are crooked people. You know what I mean? These people have been crooked things for years. But again, that could be totally, no affiliation with what's going on with this. Again, this is just my personal opinion. Last time we were here, when we made an announcement, I don't know if he said our last name, I know two members here that were against mask mandates, were making our opinion on this. And then the next day, we go to, my children go to school, and they're being told that they need to be sent home because they were in contact with someone from COVID. Okay, and I have twin daughters, the same class, same teacher, okay? And my one daughter was sent home because she was in contact with someone from COVID, okay? Now, they told her that she can either be tested, which is not happening, okay? We're not testing our kids, because I don't trust the testing. And she didn't do that, so she had to stay home, which I'm cool with. She did online, she was cool. I just didn't think that it was cool. And my other daughter, nothing happened to her. I just thought it was weird, her and the same class, that are, you know what I mean? Weird, yes, no one had answered. So again, this is just weird stuff that happens on this whole thing.
Can you guys sit up and pay attention? Sit up, maybe the grace.
I mean, I'm just saying, it just, it just really is, again.
I am making eye contact with you the entire time you're sitting.
Yes, again, people are upset. You know what I mean? People are upset, and again, like I said, they're upset with you. You know what I mean? Because you guys are the ones that pretty much hold our children's rights in the palm of your hands. You know, I'm like saying, if you guys can't make the tough decisions, I guess it's time to step down. Because I don't know, I would make the right decision, me personally. That's what I would do. I would give, nothing about, no, I'm going to give you another example. I'm going to keep going if it goes red light. With this mandate that this president makes about 100 employees, that they have to be tested weekly, or they have to be vaccinated to work, or they're going to be, you know, again, I don't follow that stuff. And my job, who's trying to do that, because I work for a big company, thousands, thousands of people have the right work, we're not at point there yet. I know a lot of people that aren't going to be taking the vaccine, okay? Don't walk off this job, that's what they're going to do. So people are going to leave these jobs because of what they stand for. And then what's going to leave with us, with these companies? They're going to be in the dirt, that's what's going to happen. I just want to see you guys make the right decision. One more thing, and then I'm done. My biggest, biggest problem, and this is what I wanted to make before I had to make this, it was on my chest, is that twin valley gives you the right to just submit whatever you want to say, masks or no masks. And that's how it should be. Like I told you last time, clean your hands, change that thing. Make it where you can send anything home where it's your parents' decision and not a doctor or whatever it is. And then people will stop.
I don't know.
That's what you have to do. Just say, clean valley. Pick up the phone, call, ask how they do it, and do that. And then people will stop coming here, harassing you, attacking you personally, or whatever they're doing to you. Do it that way. You clean your hands clean. However they do it, it's right down the road. It's 10 minutes away. I don't know, again, I might have to ask your lawyer. Again, I'll bring the lawyer up. Rothschilds, if they're making the decisions. Your people made the decision. Your vote, your vote counts, not the lawyer's vote. That's what you vote on.
Thank you, thank you.
God bless.
Thank you. You want to, I want to say something. Well, you go first, you go first, you go first.
It is absolutely, positively your right to come here and say anything you want, but how dare you attack my posture? If you ask Jimmy, I was making eye contact and listening to him the entire time. It was unacceptable, he said. You can be as angry as you want, but that was out of line. And you have no idea what my posture means. Tell the wife, so mind the business.
Okay, sure.
Yeah. So I have some things I want to say before we adjourn for the evening. I, I don't know who the first speaker was meaning when they said that some of the members of the board were giving, you know, negatively received looks to people in the audience that didn't have masks on. It is not my intention, I don't know what anybody else's intention. I would hope that wasn't anyone's intention to make anybody feel looked at negatively. You know, as far as I'm concerned, you're here to talk to us about the kids. We do have a mask policy. It's, it's up on the back of the room. However, now this is my time. I do not want to hear any talking back, all right? I'm serious. Because I, you guys, you've given your, you've given your opinions. We are not voting on anything else. And if I want to, if I don't, if I don't want to hear it because I want to tell you something, I can adjourn right now, and we can be done. That's fine. So, but however, you know, the notices in the back of the room, the idea, the point is, when we have a mandate in the school is to keep the kids safe and people that can't be vaccinated, they're not here right now. And it is your right as members of the community to come here and speak to us and to listen to those proceedings. I don't want to put any extra barriers in front of that. Other school districts do. Other school districts have completely like adjourned proceedings just because someone refused to wear a mask. I don't want to be there. And as long as we can all behave civilly, we don't need to be there. So there were some things that I wanted to address, not, not only the comments made to Ms. Albright. In my opinion, undeserved. She addressed that herself. But as far as where we are with what our liability is for not following a mandate, yes, those, that, that advice came from our legal counsel, Rothschild, who is a member of the, of the, of the Law Office Rothschild, Fox Rothschild, they've been our legal counsel for many, many years. I do not have the same opinion of them as members of the community might, especially one specific member of the community might. I would appreciate it if you did not malign us, all of us, not just the board members, but also our, our counsel. But we not, not only, when we've been in this situation, we've not only received advice from them, I, as board president, have called other school districts, spoken to their board presidents, spoken to their superintendents. They don't have the same legal counsel that we do, and they're receiving, not universally, but the large majority is receiving the same advice that we are. So I just wanted to point that out. I don't know if any of the rest of the board members want to have any conversations about what we've heard during the comment section right now? Any, any comments?
Sure, can I say something?
Absolutely, that's what I'm asking for.
I wasn't here for that voting meeting, unfortunately.
Yes.
And so I didn't get a say in that vote, unfortunately. It wouldn't have made a difference in my vote anyway. But I do want to say that in the order from Acting Secretary, it does state that nobody can be restrained, used force, or physically removed, teachers, children, students, staff, or visitors to the school. So they cannot ask a child to leave the school. I also think that every board member here should also read Senate Bill, it's a federal bill, Senate Bill 984. It is the 1995 Act of Parental Rights and Responsibilities. It will give you a very good insight of why Governor Wolf's mandate is actually not very bad.
Thank you. Yeah, that's fine.
Could you answer my questions that I posed to my, what I asked you? Can you answer my questions? Please.
As to who's being sued and who's.
Who's suing you?
No one. We talked about the potential for a suit. And it was, as I said, we're not the only ones that have been told that. It was, it was covered in the Red Eagle. It was covered in Penn Live. It was covered in the Philadelphia Inquirer. It's, it's not, it's not a big secret that, that the potential is there. I'm not saying that anybody out there is dying to sue any of us personally, you know, to get my 20-year-old house and 10-year-old car. But, but, you know, the potential is there.
It's not just for the lawsuit either, it's civil, from.
Right. So.
What's the term? What's, what's it called? Say, we can lose our, if we could lose our.
We have any other comments from the board? Can I get a motion to adjourn? Can I get a second? We are adjourned, thank you everyone for coming.
No, I didn't make a motion.
No, yes, just, I don't want to do it. I wanted to say something. Jimmy and I are going to have a few words.
I think I'm still competing against the guy. I'm still.
Yes.
All right. Set down. Exec session.